We're live, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. All right. Welcome to the regular meeting of Polotus City Council. It's July 10th, 2025. The time is 7:00 PM. Please stand with me as City Administrator Henry Hayes gives the invocation followed by the Pledge of Legions.
All right, let us pray. Precious in the heavenly Father, we thank you for all that you have done and all that you are doing in the lives of both the citizens, the business owners, the visitors, and friends of Polotus. We ask God that you be with us in this meeting, but even before we get to the requests specific to the meeting, we ask that all those that have been impacted negatively regarding the adverse weather, the flooding, the fatalities, the unknown and missing, we ask God that you be with those families, that you be with those who are working in those situations, that you would extend your grace and extend your hand of love. We thank you, Father, for the compassion of those who are out doing that hard and difficult work, and we ask God that they continue to have measures of success and that there be reasons for joy for the families that are wondering and waiting. Now, God, we ask that you be in this meeting, that you would give wisdom, knowledge, and understanding pertaining to the matters at hand, that you allow the proper evaluation, that it all turn out for the greater good for the city of Polotus, Texas. Be with us as we go through these meetings. We thank you and we trust you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honored by the Texas flag, I believe Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Okay. At this time, we're going to open the public hearing to give all interested persons the right to appear and be heard on a request from McDonald's for a specific use permit. So for the drive-through service at 11443 Shankville Road, the time is 7:02 PM. Do we have anybody to speak at the public hearing?
No one's signed up.
None signed up? Anybody present that wants to speak? Okay, we will close the public hearing also at 7:02 PM. This time, we'll open the citizens to be heard. Do we have anybody signed up or online? No?
Nobody's signed up.
Okay. Moving right along, looking for a motion in a second to approve consent agenda items number four and five as written. Unless we want to pull one for discussion.
I'll make a motion, Mayor. I did want to say, though, one of the consent agenda items has to do with the resignation of Blaine Lopez from the EDC, and I just want to publicly say that Blaine's done a great job this almost six years that he's served for Economic Development Corporation. He's had to make some really tough decisions during that time period, and I just want to say thank you to him for his volunteering his free time. There's no money involved in that. He's doing it out of the graciousness of supporting his city, so I just want to say that. I have no issues.
Okay, motion by Sanders, second by...
I'll second.
Second by... Buck Russell? No discussion is needed. However, I would like to echo and thank you as we do all our people who have served graciously on our boards and commissions. It's a lot of work. It's a volunteer basis, as is our council, but I, six years, was just short of six years, was really appreciate his expertise and grateful that we have citizens like him and others that serve on our boards and commissions and do appreciate all the work that Blaine has put forward. With no further discussion required, all in favor of approving consent agenda items number four and five as written, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. This time, we're looking for a motion, a second to discuss and take action on item number six as written concerning the McDonald's fast food drive-through permit.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion.
Motion by Sanders, second by...
I'll second.
Okay. Second by McGowan. Craig?
So it's somewhat of a formality, right? So we already approved the site plan last city council meeting, and it's just part of our ordinances that we have to do this special permitting thing for drive-throughs. I mean, who could think of a McDonald's without a drive-through? So I see they have the standard, the two driveways around like they do at every McDonald's. Everything looks okay to me. Our planning and zoning commission unanimously approved it earlier, so yeah, that's all I've got to say.
No issues.
All right. No comments, sir. Okay. Over the years, there's been various thoughts about is Polotus a place to do business? And the resounding answer is yes. We very much appreciate everybody that comes to our community, and we're very excited to have McDonald's come, and it is a formality. Things we have to go through, P&amp;Z approval, building permits, inspections, but we are very excited about all our businesses and certainly welcome the addition of McDonald's. So with no further discussion needed, all in favor of approving item number six as written, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, looking for a motion, a second to discuss and take action on item number seven as written. This is going to be concerning our new consulting firm for employee benefits program and to authorize the mayor to negotiate contract.
I think, if I may, probably discussion first, and then we can entertain a motion.
Okay, let's open up for discussion then. Let's go ahead and turn this over to Henry for...
Yes, sir. Excellent. So thank you, Mayor and council. So just a little bit background note, of course, you have information in your packet. I'll go a little bit farther backwards than what was in your packet, so knowing that in our health benefit coordinator, traditionally, as far as I know, has been a five-year contract. I reached back and I can see 2015, that selection. I can see 2020 selection. We had the opportunity to just go into another five-year extension, the way that the current contract is written. We made the decision to put it out for consideration, and we were able to receive seven bids, oh, seven inputs or responses. We had our HR and finance directors to review and score. You see that in your packet. I also was a part of reviewing, and I don't have my scores inside the packet, but I don't have a reason to input or influence any different than what the outcome is. We have, we do have the three of seven that were reviewed and the highest scoring that are, we have some representation present in case there are any questions, comments, concerns from the council. I will say that I'm open, Daniel, Diana, and myself are open to any questions, comments, concerns that you'd have for the professional staff. And again, if you have anything for the teams that are represented here today, they're present at your will.
So I understand that we have a scoring system there, and the scoring is what it is. It's a scorecard, but this is a discussion ability to be able to pull out some intrinsic values, drive from conversations, et cetera. Does staff have a recommendation? Daniel, if you want to, please approach.
Daniel Rodriguez, the finance director for the city of Polotus. I appreciate y'all taking y'all's time today in regards to this topic. Do want to start out and just say that, you know, I want to say for about the past 20 years, we've had representation by Grandal and Associates. I do want to thank them for their service to the city over that long tenure. As Henry did say, we initiated the process in regards to a request for qualifications tied to insurance brokers. The highlights that we had in regards to our scoring were experience with Texas municipalities, qualifications of the assigned team, understanding of the municipal insurance needs, a service delivery approach, and references and reputation. After we received our seven responses, Diane and I identified three that we felt were kind of the strongest candidates after the initial qualification overview. We have put forth a staff recommendation for First Financial Group of America, but I do want to say that all three candidates are more than capable than providing excellent service to the city. I think all three also give us more market presence in regards to the ongoing discussion tied to the healthcare costs in the city.
Do we have a representative from FFGA here?
Yes, we do.
Okay, if you don't mind.
I believe there's representatives from all three.
From all three here? Okay. Please, please approach. And what I'd like to do, because this is the service industry, and we are very tight in that scoring categories, my intention here is to really bring the representative up from all three, just to give a chance for council to be able to ask some questions that may be pertinent. I'll start with one general. It's been my understanding in the service that you provide, one of the questions that I have had with our previous provider was the number of companies that they work with, the number of providers, insurance providers they work with. Can you give an idea of the array of...
Sir, we're an independent brokerage, so we can market anybody out there. So we have relationships with, you know, the largest 50 or 100 companies out there. If there's somebody that, you know, that we needed to bring in, we could certainly build a relationship with them. But we are not a captive agency, having to just market all one particular product. We'll shop each one individually and try to find the best across the market and bring those to y'all.
If I may, can we get your name for...
Yes, I'm Thomas Marrroquin with First Financial.
Thomas?
Yes, sir. Marrroquin, M-A-R-R-O-Q-U-I-N.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And I'll just go ahead and start with Mayor Proton, if you have a question?
No.
No questions? Craig?
So I was looking at, and believe me, there was a lot of material to go through with all three, the top three candidates. I'm trying to compare to the size of the city of Polotus as far as the number of employees. Can you give me, and I know all of you, all companies work with all different size clients, municipality, school districts, industry. But I just want to make sure I understand, so can you give us some like examples of clients that you have or have had recently that are comparable to the size of Polotus?
Sure. So at First Financial, we specialize in the K-12 market municipalities, be it cities or counties. Locally here, off the top of my head, we have city of Seguin, we've got city of Del Rio, we've got city of Eagle Pass. We have 400 and so school districts in Texas and 30 something, 30 something cities as well. So, but we do, we do service our smallest account, Nursery ISD with four employees, and then we have Cyfair in Houston with 16,000 or so. They're not all 16,000. For the most part, most of our groups are probably 500 or less. But we have local presence. I mean, I'm an account manager. There's six or seven of us in San Antonio area that are licensed employees, you know, full-time employees of First Financial, so we don't, we don't bring in contracted enrolers to come and service the enrollment piece. We have a dedicated account manager that will run that with us, you know, we'll pull from, we'll use some of the other account managers as well, depending on what kind of manpower we need. But we have somebody here locally, bilingual, that's an employee of First Financial. Chuck Egley, who's the guy assigned to this group, he's out this week, but he's been with First Financial 23, 24 years. I hope you all, you reached out to all the references, because we stand behind our name and our product and our reputation, so.
What would you say is, I'm sorry?
No, please. My only question.
Oh, with rising costs that I'm, Polotus has experienced, I'm sure your other clients have experienced this as well. What are some of the strategies you use in your firm to help your clients manage?
Just skyrocket? Navigate that, yes. So a big part of our value is our purchasing power. So we have a lot of groups and a lot of lives, and a lot of times, we can come into a group and based on the amount of groups that we have, we've got some leverage with some of these carriers to negotiate rates down kind of as a broader, you know, as a broader piece of all of our business, of our business as a whole. Certainly, if on the medical side, we've got an in-house broker and we'll shop that out. We can kind of customize the plan to help mitigate some of those, you know, increases in cost. Obviously, with just the world and inflation and the market, things are, you know, costing more across the board, but we certainly have avenues to help mitigate that, so it's not some sort of massive increase. Or we can shop it. We're independent, so if renewal comes back with a dent with a 20% rate increase, we can see, we can shop it out there and see if someone else will be willing to, you know, to take the business at the current rate or a lower rate. We can also kind of redesign the plan sometimes. By doing that, you can, you know, help offset some of these costs. But we're actively looking at that throughout the course of the year. When renewal time comes, you know, comes around where we start getting all the renewals back from the current carriers, we assess that, and it's a constant process throughout the year and certainly at renewal to make sure we're bringing y'all the best product and at the best rate.
So just to clarify, when you said you have a lot of groups, that kind of indicated maybe you were saying that you could add us to another group, or are you talking about...
No, 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 just the relationship.
Like TML does, etc.
Well, not a, I mean, there's co-op features in a lot of our business. We certainly are omni-co-op. I don't know if y'all are in the omni-co-op, but we're the chosen TPA for that, where they vetted, you know, a bunch of, several different products on every product line, and we've kind of negotiated those down to kind of the best costs out on the marketplace. It's not necessarily a co-op is what I speak of. If I, if First Financial on behalf of Polotus reached out to a carrier and said, hey, can we, you know, help offset some of these costs, you know, one way or another? A lot of times, they'll do that because of the size, or, you know, how much business we have with them elsewhere, but not necessarily tied to some other group or city or anything like that. It'd be standalone.
And where's your local office located?
So I'm in San Antonio. We have a, so we are, I'm in the Austin office technically, and the Austin office runs from Austin down to Valley.
Where is it located, like address?
Georgetown.
Okay, so that's our, our representative would be out of the Georgetown office?
Technically, we work out of, we work out of our, out of home, really. Everything these days is mobile, so technically, it says Georgetown on our business cards and on our office, but we're, I'm here to tell you.
And what is, if you could define your number one value add that you would bring?
The people. I mean, we, everyone that's at First Financial and everyone in San Antonio. Ten years, been over 20 years for seven of the eight of us. Very little turnover at First Financial. Relationships that we've built over time, and our business is sustaining relationships long-term. And if you look at references or spoke to any references, the groups that we've had, we've had for a long time. Do some leave? Certainly, over time, they do. But the relationship that we build, we're here to be back next year, so it's not that we're coming in to try to, you know, provide all this, all this, all this service and then, you know, you don't see us again. We're, it's not just a one week a year enrollment. We're managing your all's benefits, employee benefits, and servicing that year-round, and we got quality, quality folks that I get to work with.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
And Marsh McLennan, am I saying that correctly? If you don't mind, just state your name if you don't.
My pleasure. John Bass with Marsh McLennan. My role is a public entity practice lead here in San Antonio as well as nationally. I have reviewed the information that has been available. We're grateful to have the opportunity to not only visit with the council, but we had an opportunity to visit with Daniel and Diane as well. Marsh McLennan, as you may know, is the largest insurance broker in the world. But we have 110 employees sitting right here in San Antonio, Texas, 711 Broadway and 8200 IH10 Parkway. So we are right here, the service team. I've got two of my service teammates right here. Sarah Kelly is co-consultant, and Juliette Lucero is the client manager. We have several other people that will be supportive, including the individual that will help with the benefit administration, which is handled down in our Broadway office. So the city uses Employee Navigator, and we're licensed to do the work on your behalf as for benefit administration. So it's a turnkey piece. Couple of things just to reiterate. I'm sure you've read the information, but just to reiterate your question, councilman, was regarding references. We gave specific references to the specific size of the city of Polotus. We gave three references, the city of Hondo, excuse me, the city of Castroville, the city of Chavino Park, and the city of Buda. Those, Buda is a little bigger than you guys. The other two are a little bit smaller, but they're all municipal references. But over the cross of the Texas, Marsh McLennan does business with almost 500 public entities, school systems, counties, cities, city of Kyle, city of Temple, city of Abilene, city of Dallas, city of Houston, are all clients of Marsh McLennan. So that is an opportunity that you have to do business with an individual firm that understands your business. And if you've noticed, we've received high ranking on understanding of the municipal business. I've been in the public entity business for 25 years, 42 years in the industry. I spent the majority of my career with a carrier. No surprise, United Healthcare. You can find me on LinkedIn. We understand how the business works, and that's another piece regarding references. It's important that you do business with a broker and a consultant that actually does consulting work for healthcare. Respectfully, the gentleman before me, First Financial, is really a voluntary benefit administrator. That's their expertise. Our expertise is really employee benefit consulting, whether it's medical, dental, vision, et cetera. And we're an independent agnostic broker. We don't work for any carriers. We work for our client. At the end of the day, we advocate for our client's best interest. And for a city the size of Polotus, that includes advocating potentially to the Texas Municipal League. If that is the best opportunity for you guys, we will advocate that you go to the Texas Municipal League. That's why you hire an independent consultant and broker. Last point, I could have given you local, large references. Your school district here in the Polotus area, Northside, is my client. You're welcome to call Letitia Ramirez or Ben Muir, the assistant soup for HR, about the work that we do. But at the end of the day, we're here to serve you. We look at clients as our priority, and I believe we can, we can do a very good job for the city of Polotus. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So before I turn over, just so we have kind of even distribution of questions, what is your best strategy or most commonly used strategy to help not navigate costs in this environment that we've seen the last couple of years, evening out a little bit this past year?
Sure. Couple of things. Plan design and how you structure a plan design to correct the appropriate incentives for accessing care is number one. Number two, we have a changing workforce, even within the city of Polotus. I would argue we have a changing workforce. Baby boomers like me are few and far between. It's Gen X's, Gen Z's, and millennials. They look at benefits differently, Mayor. And so communication apps may be something that the city might want to look at versus a traditional call center. Strategies around engagement, strategies around health literacy. Most healthcare decisions are really made at the home, so the spouse is involved as well. So one of the things that we've mentioned to Daniel and Diane in enrollment meetings is we need to get the spouses here. We need to educate how healthcare is actually delivered within the marketplace. The other thing that you guys are doing well, you have a, what I would call a subscription contract to one of the freestanding firms. That is a great idea. And we thought we, when I said to Daniel, we should leverage that even further to, in essence, help individuals get care quickly if they need it, but yet not sacrifice the benefit program that you currently have with Blue Cross Blue Shield. So lots of strategies that are available. Alternative plan designs that are coming out now from some of the larger carriers. You've heard possibly what is called Surest from United Healthcare, Coop Health from Blue Cross Blue Shield. There's other alternative plans that are what I would call a traditional to the traditional program. Those are gaining some popularity, and we certainly review those on behalf of our clients.
Where's your corporate offices at?
Well, our corporate office is in New York City, but our most regional office is in Dallas, Texas. We have two offices here in San Antonio, down on Broadway, 711 Broadway and 8200 IH10 West, right next to the Fountainhead Building.
And how many, how many do you have on staff locally in the two?
Roughly 110. Plenty of, plenty of folks to support the city of Polotus.
Would there be a dedicated team to support the city or just...
You're looking at them right there.
Okay.
And I'm grateful to work for these two ladies, but we have several other folks that you will see, maybe not literally, but figuratively, they will be there, for example, building the benefit administration system through Employee Navigator, which again, we're licensed to do that on clients' behalf.
Thank you.
Okay. This next question, I want to make sure falls inside the guidelines. I'm actually 12 years licensed A&amp;H producer. Without getting into negotiating contracts, the structure typically from my experience, is this a fee-based or is this a provider-based because through the carriers?
Mayor, we can do it either way, and that's what we've said in our proposal. Currently, I believe you have commissions within your product portfolio, and by and large, all of those dollars are, would flow to the new broker. That said, we're happy to provide full transparency to the compensation that we receive. That is a standard and a hallmark of Marsh McLennan, not a problem. If the city wants to move to a fee-based arrangement, remove all commissions, we can certainly do that. If it's a hybrid approach, we can certainly do that. As you can imagine, we just need to collect enough revenue to do the work that you've asked us to do. So how we get there, we can negotiate that.
Further questions? Okay, thank you.
Good, thank you. We would appreciate and welcome the opportunity to do business with the city. Thank you.
Baldwin, Baldwin Group. Stuck you for the McDonald's guy.
That's right, that's right. I'm Jason Forks with the Baldwin Group. Our office is right down here at 1604 in Lock Hill-Selma, very close to you all, and I would love to answer any questions that you all have for where we are.
So starting off, just to at least cover the same bases, I'll cover those and then we'll turn over for any additional questions. The number one value add that you feel your firm brings to the table?
Service. We're a service-centric organization. The group that we've assembled over in this office and we're from multiple different agencies across San Antonio. Everybody that's in the office, we have a public sector team that came from Brown and Brown and from U.S. Employee Benefits. We have the leader of our group that actually came from MMA, Jenny Half. She's the one who's running our group. Our group is about two and a half years old over here in San Antonio. We all have extensive experience in the employee benefits realm. It's just that we're newer. And so the number of clients that we have is not the same number of clients like MMA or First Financial have got, right? We're reassembling all of that now, so all of the groups that we have had, we're all coming out of our non-compete's right now. And we have assembled the team, so back to answer your question, we're very, very service-centric, and we have the opportunity to take very, very good care of the groups that we do have. We've got several account managers over in this office as we're building out the groups, but our focus is definitely on the service side.
And any particular strategies you use or have been using to navigate?
Care navigation's the biggest part, right? Your high claimants, we try and walk them through. Once we have identified who these high claimants are, we walk them through, and it's almost like a concierge, a white globe service, helping get them through all of the care that they need, whether it's extended, extended care, whether they're going to be going through surgery, helping them make sure that they're finding the care of in-network physicians and facilities, right? And trying to keep the cost down as much as possible. And then short of that, you know, some of, some of my, I guess, competitors in here, making sure that we're working with the plan designs and keeping the plan designs... making sure that we're working with the plan designs and keeping the plan designs as close as we can to where they are, but sometimes those modifications have to be made, you know, in order to keep the premiums where they are. There is an inevitability that healthcare costs are going up, but communicating and educating so that all of your employees become good, rather than, they become consumers rather than just patients, right? And that just comes from a good education program.
Okay. We'll start with this side, Greg.
So I had seen the other companies' references of cities like size.
Right, right.
I thank them for expanding upon that, I appreciate that. I had a hard time gleaning that out of the 41 pages in your presentation.
It is difficult because like I said, and we have a national footprint. So the Baldwin Group, we are an extension of N's Group, which is out of Houston, and we just started, like I said, this office over here two and a half years ago. The Baldwin Group has been around, they're based out of Tampa, Florida. N's Group was a group that they had acquired during COVID and then wanted to create a presence over here in San Antonio. So the problem and why we don't have a lot of references right now is, like I said, we're all coming out of our non-competes. So there are references that we have, I can tell you references that I've had in the past, they're not current clients of mine, right? And then Jenny's and then our public, our public sector team is coming out and they're getting a lot of the school district work done, but we have a national footprint. We've got 200, 250, I think. I think in the back of the proposal that we have, in one of our addendum, it shows a lot of the municipalities, the public sector groups that we, that we represent as an organization. It may be the very, very last page in that and I know it was a very, very lengthy proposal that we submitted.
Synergy Healthcare Associates, Burnett ISD.
Right, those are, right. So those, what we were trying to do was get some that were municipality and some that were for similar in size. Synergy Healthcare Associates is about 175 lives, I know that you guys are a little bit smaller than that, but that's a current client of mine here in San Antonio. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
I think as we step out of this non-compete, we're going to be able to start acquiring more, it's just, it's a very, very specific timing, right, of when most of the municipalities renew their benefit programs, right? Since most are in that October timeframe, there's the opportunities and now is the time, right, where we're going to start building that book of business back up on that side.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
John?
I don't want to put this, that's not, I have a question, but not necessarily for this firm, so.
Okay, okay. Hold off for one second then.
No questions.
And what was the size of your, your team members here in San Antonio?
So we're, we're currently about 16 here in San Antonio, we're about 4,300 nationwide.
You said 604 Lock Hill Selma?
Yes, sir, that's right, right down the road.
Right down the road. And you also have flexibility either fee-based or commission straight from the company?
Right, and so very, very similar to Marsh's response on that, it can be whichever. I think you guys are probably typically on the fully insured programs like this, it's very typically structured as a commission-based arrangement, right? And we can do exactly the same, we can set it up however you would like, whether it's hybrid, you, you sell all of the benefits net of commissions, right? And then we just, we work out a fee schedule with the city and then that's how we move forward. But typically on a group your size, it's just standard commissions for what the carriers provide, right?
That's my understanding and then my experience, but just double checking.
No, and I appreciate it, right? Because you start getting into that self-funded size, then yes, typically it becomes a fee-based arrangement.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate that.
Thank you guys very much.
John, you had one question for?
I don't want to put city staff on, too much on the spot, but first of all, I appreciate them taking the time and the energy to do this, I think it was really necessary. So thank you to city staff. You said you think all three firms would do equally excellent job for our city, but you recommended First Financial Group of America. Could you explain why?
Sure, certainly, yeah, and as Daniel comes also. So there are, there are basic capabilities that all of them that applied can do, right? There's, there's the measure of accessibility, there's the measure of, of the size of the organization, all of those type of things. Now, when it came down to the scoring mechanism, I can't speak for Diana and Daniel specifically on how they scored, but I am in agreement with their scoring. I like the fact that what was, what was called out was a portion of the administrative work that will actually be more advantageous to us and I'll yield to Daniel to elaborate.
Well, yeah, as we went through the process, we tried to identify what we're really going to be the three strongest, I say firms, just my financial background, I apologize, the three strongest firms, you know, in regards to the response. As I said earlier, I think all three can provide an excellent benefit to the city and at the same time, I think as staff, we'd be more than excited working with any team, you know, that we brought before you today. I think our scoring, as you can see, it's a very slight difference on these three in our scoring. I think all of them have a vast amount of municipal experience. I also think that really any small difference you see is largely tied to the administrative, administrative support type of systems and mechanisms that they offer on the staff side. But I think all three offer kind of the same similar capability in regards to not only presence in the market, but also after we've, you know, moved forward with our new health carrier or same health carrier, you know, whatever we decide, the reconciliation type part and also adding, you know, the voluntary type stuff we offer our employees.
So then answer your question. Okay. I'm looking at the scoring and really the only difference between a first and second place is a one-point differential in the, in the references, which brought some clarification on your, on your questions on what, sorry, Marsh McLennan had, had presented and I'm wondering if that might have been, if that had been explained, if that would have changed perhaps that?
I understand completely. I think as we receive responses, a lot of times these responses are tailored to us as a community and may not be, you know, shedding light on everything, all aspects of an individual company in the market. As I'll just kind of reiterate, I think Diana and I, through our process, was trying to identify the best three companies to bring before council. I think in our scoring, we definitely kind of highlight the fact that all three of these are very strong insurance brokers that could provide a definite benefit to some of the challenges we've been seeing on the healthcare side. I'll reiterate that, you know, as a staff, we are more than welcome, you know, working with any of these three. I think they provide some services, whether that be, what is the way I'm trying to say this? They have access to legal type stuff within their own operation that we may not have seen previously and also a, in regards to the compliance aspect as well. Our scoring, you know, fell out as it did throughout the process as we went through all seven, but I'll say, just given the nature of these three companies and how close it was, I mean, we were fully ready for whatever direction council would like to go.
So my input and I'll turn it over for discussion and then we'll have vote. One of my concerns is readily accessible personnel. And to that, that's not really necessarily the category of listen and I know you have, I know FFG has a San Antonio representative, but the other two firms do have significant presence, very close to, to us, I-10, Lock Hill Selma, that's roughly the same distance away. And availability for scheduling our enrollments or being able to come back and do classes with, I have no doubt, I feel FFG probably could do that as well, but that's another component that I'm concerned about and I feel maybe the edge or a point should be considered for availability and accessibility for some of our additional needs. One of the other aspects I have is that as an insurance producer myself and my clients all over the area, I get spread a little thin, so being able to be close to my clients is significant to service is really what, what it's all about when we're in this industry, what we're looking for. We are tight and I feel that staff did an excellent job assessing that. Sometimes also by nature, I'm not necessarily drawn to the largest corporation available, but there's a reason why the big boys are the big boys and that has got to come in context with expertise and experience and being able to maybe find that extra little hope that we need. And in my personal opinion, I feel we need that eight, I think might have been answered and maybe changed to nine from the question you asked. And I might consider, we, no matter where we go, we're going to have a good, a good selection here, but I might consider the Marsh McLennan Group, but let's turn it over for, for the conversation.
No, actually I echo and that was having that large workforce local to serve the city. And then also the, they have, I believe you said NISD, so that also makes it back local with our large population, with NISD employees too. So it kind of connects us back to Marsh McLennan.
I agree, I think the, the local presence and, and the connection to the, the school district stood out for me.
I certainly don't want to make this all landslide, like that was all that mattered. There's certainly a lot of aspects that mattered here, so thoughts?
Well, you kind of have to decide, it was like when we were building a custom home, did we want to be the small fish in a huge builder or did we want to go with a small builder and be his big client? And I think that's what council has to decide, you know, because from looking at First Financial is, is smaller, so, and Marsh McLennan, I'm sorry if I'm mispronouncing that, agency is larger. So I think that's a point of discussion. I don't know, any other of my colleagues have any comments on that?
That's a, and I'm sorry, finish first if you don't, if you don't mind, how many, are you national or just a?
So I was hoping to give a chance.
Yes, please.
My local presence.
Please come up if you don't mind, okay? Sorry, because we are recording and archiving.
We've expanded into several states now. Texas is our home, our corporate office is in Houston, we've got over 250 employees. Local presence, I mean, if that's a building downtown, you know, yes, we don't have that, but we do have, there's 10 account managers here, the city itself has a dedicated account manager, a dedicated customer service rep, a dedicated billing person. We have, all of our staff is in-house, so the building of our enrollment system, the maintaining of it day-to-day, all of our, you know, we have the resources to manage the group, so I don't want that to get lost in the fact that we don't have a, a structure here. And what, we've had them in the past and what we find is that everything's done now in person, I mean, us, I mean, us being a presence here on site, or everything's obviously through email and phone calls and managing through Houston, all the, all the back office. So I just want to reiterate that we're, we're plenty capable of handling the city and grateful to get an opportunity to do so. Well, I will also say that five-year contracts, First Financial does not do that, so we go on a year-to-year basis. If you're unhappy with the service, just give us a 30 or 60-day notice and that's it. So we won't, we won't lock you down in five years because we're confident you won't want to leave, but, but we certainly do have a presence and the capabilities of handling this.
Sure, appreciate that. To be certain, in the negotiations of which, what we are doing is authorizing me to, as position of mayor, to be able to negotiate, which would include terms, you know, whether we do year-to-year, whether we do three-year with additional or with a straight five-year contract that can all be part of, unless there is some direction that you want to give and only want a certain type of contract. But outside of that, that can be left to the negotiating of the terms of the contract. That is a great point. Do we want to be a, a small fish, small fish in the, in the big sea or do we want to be, I think you said it best.
Yeah, and, and I don't really, I'm looking for input, I don't have an opinion, I'm trying to, it's a tough choice, we have three really great candidates, so.
If I may.
Sure.
So one, one of the things that I did consider in my review, I understand the outlook of distance, but I also, as you know, have a little bit of experience in, in what I call chase, capture, kill and consume type industry. And, you know, I think that every organization that, that puts their name in the hat has an expectation of providing a certain level of service and presence. And I know that when it comes to enrollment, every firm has an obligation to put on whatever presence, classes, understanding, you know, all of that kind of stuff. And I just want to make that clear so that, you know, if it is, if anyone is stuck on locality and distance, I just, I just want to make clear that there is an expectation that there will be presence when needed and that's all about scheduling. It doesn't matter if you're local with 100 or kind of local with 16 in the region, it really is about scheduling.
That's right, thank you.
Fair enough. And again, we are, we are dealing with razor-thin margins in evaluation and scorecards, so when it comes down to it, it's going to come down to, you know, a gut feeling from what we've experienced before. Our expectations of what is available out there as far as providers and our confidence in the broker being able to obtain the best product and the best price for us, whether they have their relationships and their accessibility, does, does their size of client base provide them any type of advantage? This is what you're going to have to assess. Locality and close proximity for potentials, per the moment, hey, we need something, you know, this week, that is, to Henry's point, shouldn't be the make or break, but it is a consideration as part of the overall mix.
And just to reiterate, we are local here, the books of, yeah. And I went first, I didn't get a chance to say a couple of things, but on the school district, the North Side, obviously we're on the North Side, but we have 30 in the area, Pleasanton to South Sand, to South Side, South, Southwest, East Central, Medina Valley. So I mean, there's a bunch of school districts we have around here as well that we manage with our local staff, so I just make that clear.
Okay, if I may, just as, just as a point from my standpoint, so I know that the measure of time and effort that Daniel and Diana put into their contacts, additional contacts, reviews, conversations with me, I have confidence in what they're recommending. Of course, we will execute on, on what you all provide.
Just one question, just to follow up, you mentioned something earlier about the administrative support. Is there less administrative work, would there be less administrative work on the city staff with FFGA?
Absolutely.
Well, when it comes to various reconciliation processes that we are currently doing, so one of my evaluation pieces, as well as for, for the front office, we have to look at what are the things that we are doing now with our current broker and the things that could be lightened loads with whoever is selected next. And we did get a very clear understanding of the relief that we would, would have with FS, FGA.
Minus one point for the tongue twister. That's, that's why I'm going to drink water.
Yeah, there we go.
So don't call on me while I'm drinking. Water. Thank you very much, appreciate it. So it's a tough thing and thank, first of all, thank you for all three firms coming here. Please realize that our experience with brokers, there's always pluses and minuses, there are things, there's always some joys, reliefs and scarring from every business relationship. And a tenuous challenge, you mentioned the outside-of-the-box working with an outside provider, that was an idea we brought to council the first year to help navigate those costs. The ability to be able to work with customized, outside-of-the-box thinking is, in my opinion, and working with the U.S. Congressman as well as a state representative on formulating discussions. on formulating discussions on how municipalities and quite honestly, businesses can navigate the insurance world. It's something I've been working with both Congressman Gonzalez as well as Representative DeRizio. Of course, that's a giant task that would chip away for the next 20 years and still probably won't make it that. But nonetheless, I am appreciative of staff and your presentation. I'm also recognizing that our key to success is going to be the benefits that we can provide our employees. And to me, the, the tiebreaker, if you will, is going to be who we feel is going to be best able to stand in the gap of that outside-of-the-box thinking. The resources and tools available for designing, plan design. We are dealing with the slimmest of margins here, so really it's going to come down to your gut feeling from what you've heard, where your assessments are. And it's really kind of a hard task to ask you to pick out a broker for the next three to five years based upon 20 minutes here. So it's been 30 minutes now, but our next step is really going to be to accept a motion for whoever is going to want to make it procedurally. So whoever's prepared to make a motion can make a motion and I would recommend that they make the motion to accept and list the name of the firm that you want to, list your motion. Then we'll look for a second. If there's a second, then we'll have a vote on it. If the vote does not pass, then we'll entertain another motion for another firm. If it does pass, then that will be where we go. It should be noted that if no acceptable terms could be derived, then we'd have to bring it back to council. So there's always a, a chance that something might not work there. Again, we are council five members. Here we have four tonight. I don't vote and also it becomes a tie. That might happen, but that's the procedural basis. Is there any additional questions or discussion on any firm? Okay. Is there anybody that wants to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I move that we take action on a resolution of the city council selecting FFGA to manage the city's employee benefits program and authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute an agreement for said services.
Okay. Motion by McGowan for acceptance of FFGA. Is there a second?
I'll second that, Mayor.
Second by Sanders. Okay. All in favor of accepting FFGA as the provider? As listed in item number seven is written, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Firms represented, thank you very much for your time. I appreciate what you submitted. Obviously, it was a, a large undertaking and a lot of respondents. Staff, thank you very much for your dedication. Your coworkers appreciate your dedication to that. We'll be in touch. Thank you. All right. At this time, looking for motion to second to discuss and take action on item number eight is written.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we discuss and take action on item number eight is written.
Motion by Sones, second by?
I'll second that.
Sanders. Okay. This is really, really the approval of a bid for doing about 40, just shy of 46,000 linear feet of pavement markings on an amount not to exceed $53,514. I know we have Corey here. Feel free to come up to the podium. Do you have any questions or issues? Okay. And then second by Sanders. Sanders, Greg, you have any thoughts or comments?
Um, no. I, I, well, I have a question. I don't know if you'll be able to answer it or not, Corey, because it's, it's kind of one of those subjective questions. Even though we only had one respondent write to the request for a proposal, does that, does it seem within the ballpark of what you were estimating it would come back as? I mean, is it in the ballpark?
So Justin estimated that to be around 70,000. They came back at right under 54, so I think that's reasonable.
Okay. I'm sold. All right.
Real quick, it's a very small job in the scheme of our industry, so we don't give a lot of bids on them. These jobs are normally 300, 400 million linear feet, so comparatively, very small.
Comments? You've worked with this company before?
No.
So they're new guys to propose?
Yes, sir.
Were they found on the bid board?
I'm sorry, what?
Were they?
By board, no.
On by board? They were not on a by board? Okay.
No questions.
But no further discussion. All in favor of approving item number eight is written. Say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. This time looking for motion and a second to discuss and take action on item number nine is written.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Sanders, second by Sones. Okay. And so this is listed, is coming from me. I will give a little bit of a background. We did have a resignation from EDC. We did have a number of applications that came in. This lady, Ellen Schumaker, is actually in our ETJ area. Our EDC rules allow us to have two people from the board to be in the ED, in the ETJ area. Joel Lutz was one of them, but he moved inside the city limits. So there is room to have somebody outside of the city limits be added on there. Ellen had taken it upon herself to be able to come in and talk, has spoken with Scott. I've spoken with her. She has, if you have her resume, a tremendous amount of experience across a lot of areas and government, including federal government. And which federal secretary position was it? Apologize. I'm pretty impressed. You asked Congress for a national intern for, no, 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 this one up here at the Intelligence Committee. Select media, diligence. So there's a, there's a pretty broad base depth, not necessarily all with EDC or even part, but there are some components of it from government and interaction and its effect on people. So there's a wide variety. I was impressed, had good conversations with her. And so she is my nomination to be, to fill and complete the term of the available spot, which would be Blaine's, which would carry through till 2026. She is not here today because in the conversations that I had previously had with her, we were planning on, I was planning a nominating her in the end of September pursuant to the end of current term of somebody. And that was kind of the conversation when we received the letter resignation. Gave her call, see if she could start sooner if she'd be wanting to. She was. However, she had a trip planned that left state today earlier and doesn't get back until two days after the July meeting. And so I don't think we can ding her for an already scheduled family trip. So I am nominating her to, for approval to be put on the board effective for the August 2025 meeting. And mostly salute, showing a team for an absence. You made the merit motion?
Yeah, I, Mayor, I, I don't have anything to add. Her resume is stellar. Anybody who wants to dedicate their time to make the city better in any capacity always gets a thumb up from me, especially with these credentials. I'm happy to see her on the EDC and, and helping Scott, you know, right the ship, so.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fully supportive.
I spoke with her briefly and I'm very impressed by her experience and I think she's going to bring a lot of value to the board.
A lot of experience and value and also a business owner, so she understands the struggles and can bring that to the EDC.
And just the icing on the cake, she's spoken with Scott and I've spoken with Scott and he was pleased with the interaction there as well and I think we have the basis for a good working relationship, so. With no further discussion, all in favor of approving item number nine is written. With the noted exception that she will be starting in the meeting in August. Favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Excellent. Okay, these last two should be relatively quick, but looking for a motion and a second to discuss. Actually, we are discussing impossible direction on the first reading of a resolution of the city of Lotus, Texas, considering application made by Twin Brothers Hospitality Group for the grant reimbursement an amount not to exceed $20,000 or the actual eligible project expenditures. As a discussion, there's really no action, but just possible direction. Scott, if you want to come up and just address, and thank you for coming, Scott. I didn't actually know you were going to be here tonight. This is a plus. We're kind of going back and covering, crossing some Ts and doubting some Is with this, this item, correct?
Yes, sir. So Mayor, Council, Scott Hardwick, Executive Director of Lotus EDC. And just to give you a little background, this body has seen this application before in 2023. To be specific, it was July 13th of 2023, we did approve it. When I came on board in March of this year, I became aware of our process when it relates to incentives and decided that we need to properly change our process so that we're correctly approving the applications that are coming through. And so in doing that, this application was submitted prior to April, which is when my board put a suspension on accepting any additional incentive applications. And so what we've done is the proper procedure will be for the EDC to hold a public hearing and then the EDC consider an application. If it's approved and it's above $10,000, it'll come to city council and it'll be for two readings at city council. And so that's what we're doing here with this application. It went to my board in our last meeting in June. We had a public hearing and then it was approved unanimously after the public hearing and now we're bringing it back to you all for consideration. And so it'll be on the subsequent agenda as well and at that time you'll take action. So I can certainly go through any of the numbers or any of the related summary of the applicant, which is Twin Brothers Hospitality Group. And I think we're all aware of where they're located and what they've done with their restaurant. But I can certainly answer any questions you may have or if we want to get into that next week, we can do that as well. So I just wanted to give you the proper process as well as when you approved it last time, there was not a performance agreement, which is an agreement between the EDC, the city and the applicant for them to properly do the requirements of the application that they've submitted for them to receive the reimbursement. And if they don't, the actions that we can take related to that. So there's a draft of that in your, in your packet for review as well.
Again, this was what had come to us, but I'm caught some procedural issues of cleaning up on the EDC side. So as I said, it had previously been approved, but any questions or direction other than to continue the, the good work, Scott?
Would they get the funds all at one time, one lump sum, or would they have to meet certain criteria that, or we're not?
It's a great question. So this is a program that was before my time and the way it is set up, just as a little summary, is the applicant submits application, there's a scoring matrix, and then it goes through an approval process. If approved, then they move forward with expending their funds. Once they expend the funds, they need to provide proof of those funds to myself and paid invoices and receipts, things of that nature. Once I validate those, then I can provide the reimbursement to them. So the way the program is set up is a reimbursement once they submit for the expenditures that they, they've outlined in their application, so.
Thanks, Scott.
Any other comments or direction? Any direction outside of continuing with the current path and then we'll look forward to coming back on the next agenda? Anything outside of that?
I just want to say thanks, Scott, for getting the processes in place so they're wash, rinse, repeat. And we're staying within the laws and the rules and the regulations of the state. So I appreciate you bringing this back to us. I would just say keep doing the, the great job that you're doing.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
I can just say it better myself. I agree with, with Councilmember Sanders, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Hundred percent. Don't go anywhere, because item number 11 is discussion of action and possible direction, excuse me, discussion of and possible direction of the first reading of a resolution, city council, city of Lotus, considering application made by Lotus Development Group LLC for grant reimbursement not to exceed $20,000 of the actual eligible project expenditures after the project completion under the retailer and commercial tenant improvement program. Basically the same identical item, just a different grant. So to perhaps save you from stating the exact same thing you just did. And also, there's anything additional specific to this outside of the different applicant?
Yeah, I would just say, as you mentioned, same background. You all had, did not see this application yet. The EDC did approve it in November of last year. But again, rectifying that, so we took it to our board. This is an application for a, a new construction of a new facility. So approximately 1.2 million that'll be invested and it will be for housing of a Sherwin-Williams paint store. And so it's a nice investment, a nice business that will be operating here and they've signed a 10-year lease and they will be providing sales tax back to the city as well as new property tax. So we, we very much support it as an EDC and would like your consideration of it.
So any thoughts or directions outside of continuing the process in an appropriate, appropriate manner concerning the readings, the first, second readings? And then we'll see that next agenda as well, too, correct? Okay. Any additional thoughts, considerations?
Nope.
All right. In that case, let me check the backside of this page. Okay, we're good there. In that case, we will be adjourned. Thank you for coming. The time is 8:07 PM. We are adjourned.